So, with that council needs to select someone to run our meeting.
I would select Roger if he's willing.
Sorry.
You'll assume the duties.
Should we vote?
I'll sign the papers for you. All right, thank you everyone. Roll call please.
Mr. Cameron.
President.
Mr. Bowman.
Here.
Ms. Kelly.
Here.
Mr. Beasley.
Here.
Mr. Peterman.
Here.
Mr. Slaughter.
Here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in the nation under God, indivisible, and every and just one.
Okay. The first item on the agenda is the minutes and those been distributed in the packets. I'll move to approve.
Sorry Roger, I think you had a hard time here. Is your microphone on?
Is yours on?
Nope. Hit it again.
Roger, yours is on.
There you go.
Oh, that is it, okay. I'm new at this, sorry.
Is it okay now?
In any event, the first item on the agenda is the minutes of the prior meeting.
I'd move to approve.
Second. Most have made it second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Mr. Cameron.
Aye.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Peterman.
Aye.
Mr. Beasley.
Aye.
Okay, now is the time of our meeting for visitors and having anything to communicate to the council, address the council. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to do so?
I'm Rick Wagard, 67 Hollywood Drive. I don't know if anybody can, I think Ron and I talked about, they've got anything that this mess up there with the apartment. Hill Street, Connecticut, trying to get a stop coming out of there.
I'm sorry, specifically?
They don't think that they have to stop coming out of Hill Street because there's no sign. They just come flying. And I don't know how many more times we've always been hit going up our street or coming in our street because they come flying out of there. And the other night, my wife was driving home and they came all the way across to the far side and almost hit her head on. While the girl still had her phone in her little Pontiac, E6, whatever those little red things are. Smoking a cigarette and a phone here and comes flying out with the phone and all the way over and almost hit her head on. I don't know why they can't put a stop sign or a stumping there to slow these people down. And I don't know if she was at Hill Street or if she was at.
KLH.
You know, you don't know what it is. Anything in the whole thing with the street. I don't know if you, I guess you heard about the wreck down there the other day. My car got hit parked in front of the house the other day and it took off. Our neighbor was parked in front of their, down past their house, some guy in an old pickup truck. Come turn around, came back up and knocked him about a hundred feet up the street, right where the kids adjusted. And it took off. We think he went up to the corner and thumped sign because he came back before the cop seen him. Sean was it? But I can't even remember who came. And they, they couldn't do anything because he was backed by them. And he said, "Well, I'm on drug rehab and I'm on pain meds and my brakes went out." And he takes off and comes back. You know, this is the kind of stuff we're dealing with.
Well, we can reach out to the group that has ownership of the Hill Street condos and see about having a stop sign placed there. And we can certainly talk with our police department, our traffic engineers about what that means if it's placed and what enforcement we could do. I mean typically coming out of parking lots, there's not necessarily stop signs.
Well, it's kind of weird how they got that island thing in the middle. You know, you don't know which side you're even supposed to come out of on that driveway.
It'd be the right side in this country.
No.
But KLH's driveway and Hill Street's are like kind of right.
I mean, there's an island between going into Hill Street that separates in and out.
Is that why Hill Street? We thought maybe the two lanes over here were going to Hill Street and on the other side it was coming out.
It's actually.
Because they do come out of both ways.
Yeah, it's a driveway, so it's not a street. I mean, it's referred to as Hill Street, but it's not a, it's not a street, it's a drive.
I can tell you where like my mom and my brother lived in the condos out in Highland Heights, they have stop signs to hold their phones through the condo. You know, I just try and, or maybe we can get some more patrolling up there. Because like I said, this, my car was, wasn't terrible, and it's my junker anyway, that's why I left it sitting out there to keep people from parking in front of my driveway. They put it straight about that far in front of them. And then, like I said, in American mode, theirs is probably going to be terrible because you hit it twice.
But you're talking about your car getting hit on the street on Hollywood.
Right, on Hollywood Drive, sitting in front of our house.
Yeah, I mean, that's a whole different issue and obviously, you know, on a public street, if there's an accident.
Probably just like to see some more patrols up down there, maybe watch some of this stuff. Because this guy, he was in his old beat up Chevy that was some broken company out of Melbourne. You know, he didn't tell any of you why he was even there unless he was at the apartment because that's where he stopped again and then turned around and came back. Because by that way, all the neighbors, time all the neighbors had seen it come running out and he probably figured it was a spot. He did turn around and come back.
Well, we'll look, we'll look into the idea of a stop sign at that location. Again, we'll, you know, I can't sit here today and tell you that it's an enforceable item, even if it's there, but it might heighten the awareness of those individuals coming out of that complex that they have to stop before they enter a public street.
Can I say, we can just get, I've got a picture of this, it's the same SUV that was kept parking in front of our house, and our neighbor's house, and put the rocks in their oil pires. And then they throw them up in the front yard and then they leave. And then they come back, "Where's our rocks?" Because they can't, my car wants to roll away. Well, park in front of your own house up there in the apartments where you live.
Ron?
Yep.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
On this, on the stop sign issue, if the HOA approved, you know, and said, "Okay, we would like to have some kind of traffic control device, a stop sign, yield sign or whatever," would it be strictly on their nickel or would the city participate in installation of one if they wanted one?
Typically, if it's private property, it's a private improvement. I mean, if we really felt like it was an issue that we wanted to address, we could place it within the right of way of Hollywood's at that location and it would be in a public right of way. You know, how enforceable is it if it's dealing with a driveway coming off of private property? That's a different issue.
Because if it was between KLH's and Hill Street and in the public right of way, like on their side of the sidewalk, you know, before the sidewalk begins, but it's still public right of way, it might work for both traffic coming out of KLH and Hill Street? You know, they might, I don't know how you indicate that that's for both.
Sure, sure.
But you could kill two birds with one stone.
Again, we could look into that, I mean, it's.
Like I said, I don't think you have to people up there know which side it is because they come out, come inside. Two lanes going in like you belong to.
I was kidding about the right side, by the way.
You've got to figure out, look up there, you know, whether you really know what side they're supposed to be driving at.
Well, let us take a look at it and again, if it's something we can work with that group, you know, it affects them and it's really controlling their people that way.
And then, you know, the other thing is, we were talking about, I haven't allowed to park all the way on the sidewalk, all the way right through the 27th. They're parking up on the sidewalk, all the way through the intersection. When you've got cars on both sides, they're not parking either. We were talking about that. That's one of my biggest issues, you know, getting that so. If they just do it from there to Hill Street, no parking on one side, something like that.
Do they move their cars often or they stay there for more than, what's the rule case?
Seven. Oh, no, these are the people that work up there and live in the apartments and work in the complex or.
Gotcha.
And then, you know, some of the stuff that they park up there, like I said, there's this junk thing. And the other day, when they parked it out in front of the house, it was a foot and a half indoor, even the grass. And you cut the grass tonight because they're parking. And then that huge, have you seen the big blue truck up there?
Well, the times you left there, I drove down there and it's pretty, I know what you're saying, it's pretty tight through there, everybody's coming through there at a rate of speed.
And when you hit them, when you hit them, that parked on one side and another one similar to it on the other side, I don't know if that's, you know, that, you know, parks up there and it's there all the time. And then, and nobody measures good park facing the way the traffic goes. Because he's always pulling front, they park and they're going the wrong way all the time. Tonight he was, that's why I ran that picture down. You're correct.
So, Ron, have you looked at having one park on one side or street or not, is that what you've been looking for?
Not recently and not to my knowledge. I'm not aware that we've ever considered not parking on both sides there. I mean, there's been recent discussion about it, but we've not evaluated from that perspective in one, one purpose being that, you know, there's obviously a need for parking. So every time we eliminate on street parking, we're really considerate of the idea of what that means.
Yeah, then it's going to drive it on down the street.
Sure, sure. I mean, the unintended consequences of just saying, "That's a good idea," sometimes you have to think a little further beyond that. We could certainly take a look at it again.
That's all I got. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Wagard. Anyone else? If not, then we have a badge painting tonight. Chief Bailey.
Thank you, Mr. Peterman and members of Board of Council and Mr. Gill. Tonight, very pleased to be able to introduce to the Board of Council, Mr. Michael Wright. Michael, come up. Mr. Gill and Mayor Haas got a chance to meet Michael during the interview process for our new hire, for our new hire process. And basically, we started out with 30 applicants and took the test. As a matter of fact, Mike made the highest score on the test, so he was starting off on the top of the group, went through the rest of the process, the interview process, and again, to Mr. Gill and to Mayor Haas and myself, just proved that he should be one of the top candidates or at the top of the candidate list. So, Mike did a phenomenal job. Just to tell you a little bit about Mike, Mike comes to us from the Florence Fire Department, where he's been, he's been kind of a member for a long time, but as of 2014, he was hired on as a full-time firefighter paramedic with Florence. He's also done some part-time work with the Elsmere Fire Department and also Point Pleasant Fire Department. So he's been in the service for a while, those ins and outs, again, he's got some experience under his belt as a firefighter paramedic, so again, we're real pleased with him. Mike started with us on September the 24th, again, went through that process of 30, and again, we're just very, very pleased that to have Mike as a part of our family and his family is a part of our fire department family. So, again, we welcome Mike, we welcome his family, so with that, I'd like to pin Mike's badge on him. He's the newest firefighter, paramedic for Fort Thomas. And again, he will win badge number five. This shirt is a lot nicer to work with than some of my guys do. Okay, again, welcome Mike, again, to Fort Thomas and the city of Fort Thomas and council and the Fort Thomas Fire Department and all the citizens. So, again, we welcome Mike and thank you. So I make a nice round of applause.
Yeah. Mike, yeah, welcome. And it looks like you may have some family members or friends here that you'd like to introduce?
Yes, I do. I've got my wife, Kate, my daughter Kate went on her lap and my other daughter Carol as well.
Okay. Thank you. Well, any other words you'd like to say?
To say I'm blessed to be here would be quite an understatement, actually. Like you said, I wasn't against very, very good people. A lot of them are friends of mine that I knew, very well qualified as a staff member as well, so to be here is unfortunate.
Well, it's good to hear.
The first three weeks I've been here is pretty awesome. The atmosphere is completely different from what I'm used to. It's a very community oriented department. Coming from a busier department, we can have the time to actually sit and interact too much with our residents and with most people who are here, which is kind of a pleasure. Again, I'm very fortunate, I'm thankful for the opportunity to see you guys around. Sure.
Well, it's good to hear. That, I'm glad that's a feel that you have, that's certainly the impression that, while I can only speak for myself, that I have. And I think, as you said, I mean, you feel blessed to work for them. I think this community is blessed with the quality, the force that we have here and the personnel involved. And it's good to see a lot of your colleagues here to welcome you and it's a great atmosphere. So, happy to have you join us, thank you.
Mr. Peterman, I've got ship three here and also Captain Amon and some of his ships that Mike's actually on came in tonight, so.
Okay.
That's the type of department, as you well know, we're proud of these guys. Mike, good.
Okay. Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you.
Reports of officers, so Chief Bailey, you're still up?
Thank you, Jim and Spirit, Board of Council, Mr. Gill. Again, I would like to mention a couple of things in regard to the monthly report that was mailed out. And it kind of revolves around these three photos in there. We had a wonderful training class down at Highlands High School with their athletic staff, athletic training staff, Chris Rust, firefighter paramedic Rust, gathered together for us and again, it worked out really well, dealing with head, neck and spine injuries. But I need to interact with those people. We do get a lot of calls down there for not only the Friday night games, but also the Saturday games, the smaller groups of kids playing and football, so again, Fort Thomas Football League and whatnot. So, it's a good training opportunity. Two ride to school, September the 18th, one through St. Thomas's fundraiser, and on September the 28th with Woodfield, with their fundraiser. And I'm sure we'll probably be hearing from Johnson here shortly, but they've got the hollow loop coming up here and again, I guess, come in sooner or later.
Wednesday.
It'll be Saturday.
You'll be here.
Anyway, we usually try to do these, enjoy them, and again, they fit, they fit, again, our, again, feelings of what we think is a great PR tool. Anyway, and then the only other thing is, it is Fire Prevention Month and I'm sure Eric left, Lieutenant Sherwood's there as my fire prevention officer, our fire prevention officer. Just everybody, I just want everybody to kind of remember, both citizens, this is again, Fire Prevention Month, look, listen and learn, be aware, fire can happen anywhere as a theme this year. And as I always mention, make sure you change your batteries. Smoke protectors, at least twice a year. You can do it now, you can wait till November 3rd when we change the clocks. Or also, remember in 10 years, you should change your smoke protectors as a whole. So, they really think that that's kind of the best practice to have. So, again, we're doing a lot of tours, you'll see a lot more, I have a lot more statistics in our November meeting, but it'll go on in October. But again, interesting and exciting month ahead of us, along with some of the activities here in town, pumpkin walk and Halloween. So, again, we're busy as is the police department and looking forward to this month, they have these activities. So, without me late answering any questions council may have in regard to the report or anything in general regarding the park.
Any question? I'd move to receive and file.
Second.
Most have made it second. Any discussion?
Roll call vote.
Mr. Cameron.
Aye.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Peterman.
Aye.
Mr. Beasley.
Aye.
Mr. Slaughter.
Aye.
All right, thank you, Chief Bailey. Chief Kilgore.
Mr. Peterman, I would just report that in the month of September, we were able to promote Nathan Day and Brad Money. And I'd just like to say that both of those officers have been doing very well in their new roles. They both had a bright idea on how we can do better in serving the public and a pleasure of work. So, we're very happy to see you guys living up. Secondly, we had the Merchants of Music Festival in September. Although the weather did not quite cooperate with what people were intending, there were chills winds through, and we had no police radio issues, we've all done that for the two week. Pretty big one for us, we sent Zola off, we're down there, they're doing vinyl things and everything was moving. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Any questions?
If you don't mind, I'd like to take the time to make a comment. As some of you are aware, I have a connection to the St. Elizabeth Hospital and communicated with the chief executive officer of the hospital, and he wanted me to express his gratitude for the handling of the incident that occurred Friday. There, it was unknown at the time the incident began what it might lead to, but, you know, fortunately, with cooperation with other police departments, everything that was done, that was possible to be done to try to prevent that from ending in the tragedy it did, but also to prevent it from becoming something else, which it had the potential to do, is something I think we can be very happy about. And he wanted me to make sure and express the gratitude of the St. Elizabeth community for the support that they got from the public safety providers in this community, particularly Fort Thomas Police. And it's interesting, I'm also active with the Covenant Business Council and they are going to have an active shooter presentation, somewhat in response to what happened in Cincinnati. And if you think about it, this was our own, you know, potential active shooter situation, very quick response, no further tragedy than what actually occurred. So, again, a real shout out to the police force here and the ones that provided additional support as well. So I want to take the opportunity to say that. With that, roll call vote.
Mr. Cameron.
Aye.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Peterman.
Aye.
Mr. Beasley.
Aye.
All right, new city administration report.
Yes, I just have a couple of items, really for update. I want to remind everyone and our public that we have a meeting on Wednesday, a really important meeting at the Community Center mess hall. The doors will open at 6 o'clock. Residents will be able to view all the boards, all the work and background material that went into developing our updated comprehensive plan. There'll be an opportunity for a presentation that summarizes that from our consulting team, highlighting all the topics, including goals and objectives and all the committee work that went into that. And then the Planning Commission will convene shortly after that, probably about 7:15, 7:30, and actually conduct a public hearing where the public will be invited to comment on the plan in its entirety. So, a really important meeting, that'll be the start of the Planning Commission considering that for adoption. It's not likely they would act on it that evening, but it's an opportunity for the public to have a full visualization of what went into it and make public comment. So we encourage everyone to be there, all of council obviously, and our staff, people that have been involved will be there, as well as a lot of the committee members that served and hopefully some of the public that has taken interest in it. So, that is Wednesday, this Wednesday.
Ron, can I ask a question about that?
Sure.
The last one that was held, there were boards set up around the room for people to look at. It's going to be the same format?
Yes. The boards will be set up with an opportunity for viewing in advance of the presentation. And then we'll break and have an opportunity for them to kind of interact with the people at the boards and then we'll conduct a public hearing.
Okay, and so doors open at 6?
Six o'clock.
And the presentation at 6:30?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
We've talked about the Law Labor License Committee. I think we're set to meet with our group from NKU on Sunday for their presentation part, and then we'll be reporting to the Law Labor License Committee before the next council meeting. So, we'll be scheduling to meet with that committee. And then Joe and I have been working on a few dated policies that we'll put in front of that committee as well, so we'll send that stuff out in advance. It's really just updating some dated policy and reviewing those things with committee. So we'll be set for 6:15. We may ask that committee to be a little bit earlier if we think the agenda dictates that based on what we end up with. And then just a couple of other items to mention, the North Fort Thomas Avenue sidewalk, staff has met with our design group on the sidewalk and they will be submitting preliminary plans to the state for initial approval. We are going to be setting a public hearing based on that probably before the Thanksgiving holiday. So we'll be inviting the public and the affected property owners to share those plans with them and have public comment on those before obviously they're finalized or put out for bid. So we anticipate that being later in November. And I want to remind everyone of the pumpkin walk, which was moved from Thursday to a Friday, and the hours have been extended. It's based on some feedback that we've had from residents. It's always been a great event. A lot of folks have commented that having it on a Thursday night and a school night makes it difficult to have the little ones out. Our rec department is pairing that with a, actually Halloween themed movie that'll occur after that at the amphitheater, so it should be a good event. And that is on Friday, October 26th, from 6 o'clock to 9 o'clock, and the movie starts at 8:30, so. And I think that's all I had as far as report. Does anyone have any questions?
Where is the movie show?
At the amphitheater.
Oh, really?
Yes, we'll have an outdoor, and we have some citizen groups that'll be participating, Alliance Club and others, and providing, you know, some treats for the kids and so forth, so hopefully it's a good weather evening.
Okay, thanks. New business?
The only item of new business we have is a consideration for an agreement that was attached in your packet. This is, St. Andrews Church has approached the city for a number of years, contemplating the idea of placing a parking lot adjacent to their church. And it would be served off of South Fort Thomas Avenue on the property formerly known as the Anderson Property, which was subdivided. The city actually owns the piece on the corner where the water fountain and bench was installed a couple of years ago. The part between there and the church is the subject property. They appeared before our Board of Adjustment for a request for approval for a conditional use to place the parking lot. They've had multiple versions of this that they've considered and settled in, and you have a copy of the plot and that was approved by our Board of Adjustment that shows the location of the parking lot proposed. The key element being, and the reason that it's before you this evening, is there is a public right of way. It's a platted public right of way, obviously not improved, and it extends from that portion where you see the driveway entrance proposed. And it actually traverses all the way down between the houses on Chaufont, Chaufont Place and St. Nicholas Place. So closing that right of way, this is the only access to an additional right of way, being South Fort Thomas Avenue, was not an option. Again, they've reconfigured their parking lot a number of times and settled on this, which would put the drive aisle as the portion located within the right of way. So the agreement that was conditionally approved by the Board of Adjustment would require that there be an agreement put in place with the city involving the maintenance and the liability issues of allowing the use of that for a private improvement, private improvement being for the church on a public right of way. So that is the agreement that you have in front of you. I know Jan's reviewed this, it's been reviewed by their legal counsel, and the request is for it to be considered to authorize the mayor for signature for this agreement, the way that it's presented this evening.
So, are we giving up the property or is it, we have, it's going to be grass and turning concrete?
It's basically, the area is unimproved currently, it is not a transfer property. It's basically an agreement that allows the use of the property to place improvements on in conjunction with the parking lot. So it'd be the drive aisle in concrete or asphalt.
So, I had a question. So on this current paper street, the right of way, is the sidewalk there on the avenue, right?
Yes.
So does the city currently maintain that, something to deal in that small section of 1328? How would that be adjusted? I didn't see, and I agree with you on the sidewalk.
Okay, the sidewalk, you're referring to the sidewalk parallel to South Fort Thomas Avenue? Yeah, that's all in the public right of way of South Fort Thomas Avenue. That would be maintained.
So what's the minimum?
Yes, yes. And it would cross through that to enter into their property on that paper street.
I'm just curious, you know, if the increase traffic, right, in that situation, is that going to continue?
On the sidewalk portion, yes. They would have to rework that, it would probably be new actually, because when they place their apron, they'll replace that same section as they cross it. There'll be considerable amount of fill necessary to bring that to grade, so with the truck traffic and otherwise, they'll probably damage it to the extent it'll be replaced. So it would be placed new at the time that they finish the project.
Jan, do you have any comments? Jane, do you have any comments?
Yeah. We've had this a while.
Okay. Well, there's not, uh, the resolutions, there's not a separate resolution on the ordinances and resolutions, so, if there aren't any further questions, I guess a motion's in order to approve this?
Correct.
Can you allow the mayor to sign off on it?
All right, well, I'll, uh, Chair'll recognize a second, and, uh, any further discussion then? All right, roll call vote.
Mr. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Beazle?
Aye.
Mr. Peterman?
Aye.
Mr. Beazle?
Aye.
And Mr. Slatter?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries. Um, Finance Committee report on disbursements.
Reported dispersment September fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen through October eleventh, two thousand and eighteen. General Fund, two hundred and ninety-nine thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven dollars and eighty-two cents. Tower Park Fund, two hundred and sixty-five dollars, five hundred and nine, two hundred and sixty-five thousand, five hundred and ninety-eight dollars and sixty-seven cents. Public Works KDOT Fund, ninety-one thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars and sixteen cents. Reoccurring Debt Service Fund, one thousand, one hundred and forty dollars and eighty-eight cents. CBD Revitalization, twenty-two thousand, one hundred dollars and thirty-eight cents. Waste Fees, ninety thousand, eight hundred and fourteen dollars and seventy-seven cents. Police and Fire Pension Fund, one thousand, four hundred and eighty-one dollars and fifty-seven cents. Total, seven hundred and seventy-one thousand, eight hundred and fourteen dollars and twenty-five cents. We, the undersigned members of the Finance Committee recommend that warrants numbered four, five, oh, seven, through four, six, five, eight be approved, and Treasury be authorized to issue checks for their payment. Mr. Peterman, Chairperson, Ms. Kelly, member, Mr. Beazle, member.
Move to confer on the recommendation? I get it. Motion made in second, any discussion? Roll call vote.
Mr. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Peterman?
Aye.
Mr. Beazle?
Aye.
Mr. Slatter?
All right. Finally, uh, Municipal Order, MO, oh, seven, two thousand and eighteen.
Municipal Order, MO, oh, seven, two thousand and eighteen, a municipal order declaring city-owned personal property, vehicles and equipment as surplus and authorizing the city administrative officer to solicit public bids for their sale.
Is there a motion? Is there action needed on that? Okay, I'll move to a plea. Right. Motion made in second, any discussion? Roll, roll, vote.
Mr. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Peterman?
Aye.
Mr. Beazle?
Aye.
Or, Mr. Slatter?
Aye.
Anything else for the good of the honor?
I guess, Mr. Peterman, do we need to approve the public hearing minutes for the taxes? Would we approve those, the minutes from the tax, or including in our packet, but not sure if you have a vote?
No, no, actually, those are for reference, those are from the Planning Commission, right.
Of the tax?
Oh, for the tax, oh, I'm sorry, I thought you meant from the goals and objectives, I apologize.
Oh, no, yes, yeah.
From the, yes, probably should, yeah, good, good catch.
All right, so, um, thank you, Mr. Cameron, is that a motion?
Motion to approve, yes.
All right. Um, the only point of discussion that I would have, is pretty minor, but it says that, uh, Mr. Ewald noted that TRIAD, spelled T-R-I-A-D, and that is actually TRIAD, T-R-I, cap, E, cap, D, Tri County Economic Development Corporation, um, so that would be a correction